Good evening. It's 7:00. We'll call the meeting to order. Karen, would you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Brink.
Here.
Commissioner Kubal.
Here.
Commissioner Steeler.
Here.
And Chair Gerard.
Here.
We ask if favorable, please stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I ask for a motion to approve the agenda, I want to welcome Justin and Geneva for re-upping for the Planning Commission. Thank you for your continued service. I will also be -- was appointed last week, so I will also be staying on.
Yay!
So we are still short one. I guess no one wants to sit next to Don, but we're working on that. With that, I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented or with changes.
Before we approve the agenda, where is the minutes on here? I don't see that we're approving the minutes of the last meeting on here.
It's under item five, the consent agenda item.
Oh, okay.
Would you like to discuss the consent agenda item, Commissioner Kubal?
Oh, no. I just want to go with it then.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
You got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-nabatable motion. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented or modified.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. First business item tonight is a public hearing, so it's for a variance for 240th Street North between 5293 and 5295, 240th Street North, and the PID is attached. The way this will work this evening is that the city will present the application, as they are familiar with it. We will then add a -- the commission will then ask any questions that they may have of staff or clarifications. We will then ask if the applicant would like to add anything or if we missed anything. And after that, we will host a public hearing. After the public hearing, then it'll come back for a decision by the Planning Commission. I'll give further instructions at the public hearing part. So I believe, Ken, you're presenting?
I am. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. As you introduced, we have a variance application before the commission this evening for your consideration. The property is on 240th Street. I'm going to go to a different map here. Just north of Highway 8, where it comes in here off of 35. It's a vacant property. It's about 10 acres in size, so again, we're just in this black box area. The applicants, the Middlestats, are proposing to build a new single-family home on the property with the septic system, primary and secondary system. House pad here, secondary system here, and the primary mound here, 240th Street out here on the east side. The plan, as shown on the screen, however, requires a couple of setback variances to be approved by the city, and that is the application before you. One is to have the septic system components less than 10 feet from the edge of a property, which would be the property line along this part of 240th, and the secondary system elements being only 60 feet away from the edge of the wetland instead of 75 feet, as required. Again, the Middlestats have made the applications, and this is the request before you for those two variances. Again, I touched on it briefly. The property is about 10 acres in size. This will help show it also. The green line is generally the boundary of the wetland within -- or, excuse me, of the high ground, the wetland around the perimeter, again, this part of 240th on the east side. It's within this area, again, that the applicants are proposing to build the home. This is the plan, and then this shows where the driveway will come in as well. One thing to point out, this part of 240th Street, which runs north and south, from 240th to the north, is a private driveway. It's addressed 240th for emergency vehicles and the postal service, but it's not a public street. So that is the difference. But, excuse me, it still has to have addressing for all the lots, for those other services. So the applicants put their application, their narrative together. Couple of the issues that come into play is the wetland, the shape of the property that's available for building, and the topography limit their choices for where they can fit the primary and the secondary system in for the septic systems. Thus, again, the requests for the variances. Looking through our criteria, findings of fact, which are on page 11 in your packet or page three of this report, as the commission well know, we have five criteria that the city has to look at for any variance request, and they're labeled A, B, C, D, and E in the report. We look at the surroundings, topographic conditions, are there practical difficulties? And that's criteria one. The applicant has identified the shape of the property, the wetlands, the amount and the topography limit, again, their choices with the soils to place the primary and secondary system on the site. The -- excuse me, the second condition we look at is the property owner using -- proposing to use the property in a reasonable manner. I'm very confident that putting a single-family home with septic systems in on a vacant lot is a reasonable use of the property, is what meets that criteria. Third criteria we look at is the plight of the landowners due to circumstances unique to the property, not created by the landowner. Again, existing conditions are there, the wetlands, the amount of wetlands, the shape of the wetlands. So staff's opinion, they meet that criteria. Fourth item we look at is the granting of the variance will not be detrimental to the public welfare or injurious to other land or properties in the area. The installation or the construction of a home with a driveway, primary system, again, would be the front mound, secondary system here, will not, should not, I'm confident will not, have a negative effect on the wetlands and the surrounding natural features, especially when the new systems that will be installed will be meeting all current standards. And lastly, is the variance request in keeping with the spirit and intent of the chapter? Does it impair supply of light and air to properties? Would it increase congestion on public streets? And all the other criteria that I will not read, and the answer is no. It does not do any of those things. It's very in keeping with the neighborhood and the area. Again, a series of single-family homes on the street are very much in keeping. This will show a little better with the character of the neighborhood. So with all that said, with the staff review, we're recommending commission adopt the resolution that was included in your packet with the report. That's for the approval of the variance requests for the installation of the primary and secondary septic systems for this property. Again, doesn't have an address yet. We're calling it XXX, 240th Street, and we're recommending that approval is subject to the six conditions that are in the report, and they are in the resolution as well. Those are that they not start in construction until they get all their required permits, that the new septic system be built to the county-approved plan and be consistent with the plans submitted with this variance request, that the applicant provide the city with certificate of survey and grading plans for the building permit, that the applicant or contractor install all the necessary erosion control measures before starting any excavation or site work, and that the applicant and contractor preserve as much of the undisturbed area adjacent to the wetlands as is reasonably possible. With that, I will stop and take questions. The applicants, the Middlestats are here as well to answer questions or anything else you might need of them.
Questions from staff?
Yeah. Susan? Because we are allowing a variance to the distance of the wetland, does staff consider that it would be reasonable to add a seventh condition that the applicant will comply with the rules of Washington County regarding routine pumping and operation, continued proper operation?
Of the septic system?
Yes, sir.
I don't see a problem with that.
Other questions? I do. Actually, first a comment. In your narrative, city staff recommends planning commission. When you get to be 60 feet, I think we want to be 60 feet from the wetland, not 60 feet of the wetland?
Yeah, that was a typo I caught. Yes, thank you.
Kind of a big typo. My second question is more just a fundamental, has nothing to do with this particular project, but this is the third variance we've seen, and I think we're going to see more of these with septic, older septic systems. And we do the land part of it, and Washington County does the permitting and they site it and everything. Do we, do they have anything they are looking for us from except to give approval? It just seems odd that the county's got kind of a hand. They always seem to put a thumb on you a little bit on this stuff, so I'm kind of wondering, do I have it right there? We're just doing the land and they're doing the actual septic?
You are correct.
Okay. I'm good with it. Other questions? Would the applicant like to say anything? Not required. We ask you to step up, state your name and address for the record, please. Well, sort of your address.
My name's Dan Middlestat. My address, 325 Atwater Street, St. Paul, Minnesota, 55117. Yeah, I just, it's been a lot of work trying to figure out how this, how this process actually goes about and with Washington County needing permission from Forest Lake, and it's, and then this, this city hall, you know, thank you guys for your service, you know, I, it's, you guys do a responsible, you know, thing for the city. I've never really, I watch the YouTube of, of you guys and see other guys' personalities and how they clash together to make things happen, and I guess that's why I get grateful for it. I grew up in this town, and my school bus used to go down this road, and I've always wanted to live in this area again, so it's like, it's like a dream come true to be able to find a piece of property there, because there isn't very many large parcels like that left in this area, you know, so, yeah.
All right. Any questions to the applicant?
Welcome, but just realize that this is a private road, so you got to deal with your own snowplowing.
Right, right. We, we've talked to the neighbors. There's a neighbor to the, to the north and south, and I guess the neighbor to the south, maybe it's east and west. The neighbor to the west does the winter, and the neighbor to the east does the summer. So I asked if I could get a part of it, and he said, well, wait till you get a house here, and then we'll let you in on it, so. Very good.
I have a question.
Yep. Kevin?
So I'm not sure if you're getting a loan or if you're financing this, but some of these lenders are going to require some sort of a maintenance and driveway agreement. Do you know if you have something like that in place right now? Not that it matters, I was just curious, because again, it's being a private drive, considered private driveway, you might need to have some sort of a maintenance agreement in place in order to get your financing.
I haven't, I haven't really, we've kind of, we've kind of got, you know, different financing that we're going to be using. So I don't think that there's going to be any problem with that.
Other questions? Thank you. We may have some later for you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. The way this will work, we ask anyone who wishes to speak to this application, please come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record, tell, spend a couple minutes giving us your thoughts on this application. Once all parties have been heard, we will close the public hearing, bring it back for a decision by, or more discussion by the Planning Commission. So with that, I will open the public hearing at 7:16 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Karen, do we have anyone online or any emails to read in?
I have no one online, no emails.
And Mr. Chair, for the record, I did not receive any comments or emails either.
Very good. Just in case there's a stampede.
I have an empty proposed house site. You can't see another house.
I'll ask again. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Last call for anyone who wishes to speak to this application. And no one's come online?
No one.
Then I will close the public hearing at 7:17 PM and bring it back for a discussion.
Come, I have a question for the city. Will the city, being this is considered a private road or a private driveway, require any type of a maintenance or a shared driveway agreement?
Not for an existing. If it was a new development coming in, create, wanting to create a series of lots on a private driveway, we would, but not in after-the-fact situation.
So who owns the road?
Well, looking at the plant maps, it's, I think there's easements that go out to the center of the pavement, but again, it's privately owned by the people on either side of, so it's really a long, private driveway.
So the two owners on each side assumably own that road, which basically they could say that he couldn't have access in if they didn't have some sort of an agreement?
Yep.
So we're not going to require that we get some sort of an agreement in place?
Well, but then we would have to try to get agreements for all the people on that driveway.
Are there other houses pass that on that same driveway?
Yes, both north and south.
Huh.
Oh, I'm going to put up this next map here.
That's interesting. For resale, it seems like it'd be a real problem.
Yeah, it's, there's at least three, these three here.
And as far as you know, there's no agreement in place on use and access of that driveway and maintenance?
Not that I, not that I found.
Huh.
Yes, interesting. Closing paperwork, we had to agree to allow the other properties easement to, it's in a closing contract.
So you do have that in your, in your closing, in your title agreement?
I think I have that paperwork with me.
Oh, I, no, I'm just thinking out loud.
We have just seen problems in the past when, for instance, somebody moves into what's now 5295 and says, no, I don't want anybody going by. This is my road, and I don't want anybody going by. So if you have solid documents that you have full access and you have easements in place...
Or in the case of my neighborhood, the maintenance, like snow removal, I'm on a private road, and we have 30 people that use that road, but not all 30 contribute, and it can be a tense issue. But it's nice to have an agreement with your neighbors if you can get one for those purposes.
Further discussion?
I have one more question for the city. I know Susan brought up the question about maintenance of the system, and this has come up before. And is, is that maintenance issue covered by Washington County? Because maybe we don't need to be bringing that up and adding in language to that effect if we know for a fact that Washington County has provisions and requirements for that. But if they don't, then we should have, it should be just standard language in the other six items that we list here. But I mean, maybe it's something to look into, or maybe you know for a fact that Washington County already has defined.
I know the county has standards, but I don't see any harm in including something like that in this. So it's in the city record if anybody ever looks back at the minutes or a resolution five years, 10 years from now.
Then we should just have it as a standard language item for future ones as well, yeah.
And if I may, Mr. Chair, on that, I quick drafted something to try to answer or put down on paper what Susan was asking for. I wrote, "The applicant owner shall keep the septic system pumped and maintained according to county standards."
Can I suggest a slight alternative?
It's, it's yours. I just started.
All right, but just for discussion, "The applicant shall fully comply with all rules and conditions promulgated by Washington County regarding septic tank construction and operation."
That works for me also.
That's a big word in here, promulgate.
There are a couple of big words in there, but you know what? I know that you are, that you understand.
I go with the simple guys. Further discussion? Otherwise, the chair will be looking for a motion. Susan?
Mr. Chair, I move approval of the variance request, the two variance requests, subject to the six conditions that are in the document, and with a seventh condition stating, "The applicant shall fully comply with all rules and conditions promulgated by Washington County regarding septic tank, septic system, construction and operation."
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on a motion?
Just that the, the word of is changed to?
Yes. From?
From, yeah.
And I grant this is sort of a belts and suspenders thing, but we are talking about, about a variance in a, in a sensitive water area.
Other comments? Hearing none. All those in favor, signal by, by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. So the Planning Commission is the final decision on this unless someone would like to give a counterargument for some reason not to do it, and there's a process that they have a week to follow. I don't see that happening in this case. So welcome back to Forest Lake. Good luck on your project.
I'm so excited. It's a wonderful town that, my wife Michelle is mainly managing, she's been traveling back and forth, and it's a, it's a place that's special to me, and I hope it's as special to her, and all of that in the future, which she gets to experience it.
Enjoy.
Welcome.
Have a good evening.
And as soon as you're a resident, be happy to have you occupy a chair.
Wow. Yeah, I, I watch the Culvers things in the billboard guide and the, the dwellings on the property about the parking and hours and hours of you guys, so I kind of, I kind of know you guys a little bit, like just from the, from the television, but, yeah, it's, it's almost, it sounds like you guys are famous and I'm, and all stepping in on your, on your ground.
I think he's a good candidate.
I have a medical administrative degree. I don't know much about politics.
Don't need to know politics.
Sometimes that's bad.
She's a critical thinker. She'd be good for that chair.
Yeah, I worked at the U for 24 years, so I'm kind of used to hard work and my school doing this, doing everything I write.
Welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next up is our accessory dwelling unit discussion. I believe, Abby, you're presenting?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Chair Gerard, members of the commission, at your last meeting, you reviewed a, you held a public hearing and reviewed a draft ordinance of four accessory dwelling units. As a reminder, this would allow accessory dwelling units as an accessory use in the agricultural district. After you held that public hearing, you discussed the item and directed staff to make some modifications, specifically removing the homesteading requirements, clarifying shared drive-in parking or shared drive-in utilities, requiring parking associated with the accessory dwelling unit, require that the attached garage be a part of the footprint of it. You also asked staff to look to explore strengthening habitation requirement that it wouldn't be necessarily for commercial use, used for some sort of business purposes, not preclude additional accessory structures on this site. I also know that it was asked of staff to look into rental licensing programming, but that it might be separate from the accessory dwelling unit. So staff has drafted the enclosed ordinance based on the direction of this commission. The one thing that isn't included in here is anything about rental licensing. We are working with our legal team, with our colleagues at City Hall here to explore what that really means in terms of a new program on policies for the city. That would have to be under separate ordinances, separate discussions, those sorts of things. I certainly anticipate that in 2023, I'll bring back some more information about rental licensing. I'll let you know that that is, it's going to be a larger discussion than just necessarily for ADUs or short-term rentals. It's going to be a much more significant conversation, I think. I'm not sure where the city stands and whether or not now is the time to start looking at that type of a licensing program. So as noted in my staff report and in the last meeting, when we're looking at zoning amendments, we look to see that they're consistent with a comprehensive plan, that there's no conflicts with the zoning code, and overall that there's a general public benefit. I do outline that there are no conflicts, and there is a public benefit to allowing accessory dwelling units. Staff's recommendation is the council discuss the item and make a recommendation to the city council. My staff report notes that it's a public hearing and take public comment. That was carryover from my last staff report. I apologize for my oversight. On that, you do not need to hold another hearing, that's already been done. So it's really just commission discussion, and hopefully tonight you'll make a favorable recommendation of approval to the city council.
Questions to staff? All right, we'll start on the left tonight. Geneva?
Okay, under section B of the accessory dwelling, where there's like numbers one through 10, and a lot of that is underlined, but there's strikeouts with three and eight. So does that mean they become part of two and seven, or what does that mean?
No, no, those were, they were just changes. I apologize for that. I used track changes in the original ordinance to show you what was being added in. I used track changes to modify number three and eight from what you have seen before. Those were changed from three and, and three and eight were changed from what you'd seen in the last version, and that formatting just was retained there. Three and eight will be retained.
Okay, so just pretend that the, the strikeout, like on three and eight, is not there?
Yeah, I would say that the commission is favorable of making a favorable recommendation to do it with minor changes to formatting.
Kevin?
Geneva asked my question.
Susan?
In section one amendment, it reads, "In all districts where dwellings are permitted, except in approved manufactured home parks," and then it would also read, "and except in permitted accessory dwellings." The following, the, "And permitted accessory dwellings," the sentence doesn't read correctly.
I understand what you're saying, and so I suppose it would be "and in all districts where accessory dwellings are permitted," because the reference is "in all districts," not necessarily the actual use of a permitted. So I think that amendment just needs to re, be modified minor, in a minor fashion to reference back to the district where permitted accessory dwellings are allowed.
Except in approved manufactured home parks and in districts where accessory dwelling units are permitted?
Correct.
Would that be?
Yep.
Okay. A silly, picky one, but usually under section three dwellings, usually when you have a number, you, you do the written-out O-N-E, and then the numer, the Arabic numeral and friends, but I, I don't know what your city attorney prefers.
Where it says a building or one or more portions thereof?
Yes, please.
Yep. I think that some of that is consistent with what is in the code right now. It wasn't being proposed to change, but we can see if that clarification.
I, I don't know what you're, I'm still working on in the, where the one through 10 is. "The principal structure and the accessory dwelling must be supplied with the same water and sewer or septic connection." And I am wondering if, for instance, it would be allowed for the accessory dwelling to have, for instance, a composting system or a separate... or a separate sewer or septic. And, and I'm thinking of several places where, where it would make sense to me as I'm driving around, something would, would make sense. And if it's on the, for instance, backside, there's a road, there's a house, and then you've got an accessory dwelling unit, and if the water and septic are, are, are pulled in from the road, then you have to go through the middle of the house to deal with the water and septic. Or if there's a well, pull off that well. I'm wondering if, if it could be allowed to have separate water and septic as long as they are approved by the city.
I think the concern here is that if they had separate water and sewer, let's just say they were on city urban services, water and sewer, that there runs the risk of them being subdivided in the future. Now, if the city code would allow and met the minimum lot standards, then maybe that wouldn't be a concern. Traditionally, a lot of communities allow these, but that, that sewer and water is coming from that main house to the accessory dwelling, really tying that accessory structure to the main structure. I think I can look to see how that language could be changed some, that it suggests they can have their, I can see like a septic system that potentially an accessory dwelling couldn't be serviced by an existing mound, and you'd need to maybe create a new one. I don't even know if the county would allow that sort of thing. But the intent here is that they operate as one fashion.
Just as, I was just playing and thinking, okay, no, I'm never going to do this 'cause I don't like other people living around me, but I just don't. But if I were to put one on my place, there's no place, even on 20 acres, that they could share the well and the septic system.
Well, the water would come from your main home. You would pipe from your home to the ADU, not back to the original well. Generally speaking, you'd pipe your water sewer services to the house, and then from the house, they'd go back to the well or the septic system.
Go.
Huh?
Oh, I thought you had something. Kevin? Regarding that septic, I'm guessing that when houses are built, septic systems are sized for that house, bedrooms, et cetera, square footage. And now someone adds a 800-square-foot accessory dwelling unit. Now that septic system, I'm guessing, is not gonna be capacity. It's not gonna, it's not gonna be able to service that additional footage based on how it was sized, probably when it was put in. What's gonna happen then if they want to do an accessory dwelling unit? I'm assuming the county has to approve the septic plan, and if it doesn't comply, they're gonna have to increase their septic size in order to do this.
That is correct.
Okay.
And our city building inspection department is pretty well-versed in working with the county's system to ensure that they've met county requirements before we would issue a building permit.
So this wouldn't be a cheap thing for most people to do?
This will not be. This is, in essence, building a new home. It's just a smaller home, I would assume. And I haven't scoped one of these out, but just knowing construction costs, I can't imagine somebody would build one for less than $100,000.
There are a lot of tiny house designs out there that are considerably less than that.
Good.
And in a way, that's kind of what we were looking at was, you know, a, a tiny house for a mother-in-law or a tiny house for, you know, an adult child that's still needing some supervision.
And at this point, we're only talking about agricultural property?
Only the agricultural district. We have drafted it. I did not change the minimum lot area for, because right now it is five acres where we do have a larger minimum lot area in our agricultural district. Initially, we started these conversations considering maybe ag district and rural residential, but as we discussed, we would try to see how, what the interest was in agricultural. And the ordinance would not need to be amended if we allowed the consideration in the rural residential district in the future.
Other questions? Susan?
Under section 6D, and, and I apologize, I should've gone back to the original ordinance, says exempting the floor area of the permitted accessory dwelling, the maximum allowable total of accumulated floor area of all detached accessory structures, for me, Reed Polborn's, shall be as follows.
So what this is, is the city has different performance standards for accessory structures throughout the code. And what this is trying to do is really establish that accessory structures are, accessory dwellings are not considered accessory structures. They are their own thing. So we have a number of references where it's saying not including an accessory dwelling, not, you know, these things except in accessory dwelling. And those code sections like D and E kind of just trail off. We don't see all those other standards 'cause they're really not relevant to the ADU ordinance. The only thing that's being in there is that provision of except where it's an ADU.
Thanks. And like I said, I, I should've gone back to the original code, and I apologize.
That, that's just fine. That's what I'm here for.
Other questions, comments, concerns? So what we're looking for this, what your, I believe, staff is looking for this evening, except for some grammatical changes and a little bit of editing, approving this ordinance or recommending to the city council approval of this ordinance. That's our hope. I'm sorry? No, we did the public hearing. Let me, yeah, and, and in case you didn't catch it with Abby, the, the last part of our report shows that we were gonna host a public hearing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, which we hosted at our last, we had the public hearing at our last meeting. And my, my guess is just through editing that paragraph remained as is. And so we have had the public hearing, so we're all good to go. On that, there's no issue with being properly notified and all of that, so we are, we are good to go as is.
That is correct. Thank you.
Kevin?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the council to adopt the ordinance, amending Title 15 land usage, Chapter 153 zoning code, related to the inclusion of accessory dwelling units in the agricultural A zoning district.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
One second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Hearing none. We'll call the question. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. This brings us to our other, and so we will start with our esteemed community development director, Abby, and work our way around.
Well, I know crazy new things to offer. Happy New Year. I also wanted to thank Commissioners Brink, Kubal, and Chair Gerard for re-upping and your continued service on the planning commission. I work, look forward to working with all of you for the next three years. And we are sitting with a single vacancy from former Commissioner Coon's seat. Mayor Bain did let me know that we do have two interested applicants for the single seat. So that is, we hope that we'll have a new body in that position. Not, probably not at your next meeting, but probably the first meeting in February. And then also, our new council member, Blake Roberts, has been appointed as the planning commission liaison. He was unable to attend this evening, but I think we'll start regularly seeing Commissioner Roberts at our meetings as well. Council member, did I say commissioner? The only other thing that I would add is, we do have a meeting in two weeks. It should be a short meeting. The only thing that we have on the agenda is to talk about electronic billboards. Everybody loves that. It is a discussion item. So if in the next couple days, or even early part of next week, there was anything that the commission thought you maybe wanna at least just have staff updates on, or anything we could have prepared in advance for you, feel free to reach out to me. Let's chat to see if there's certain things that this commission might want to have more information or discuss at the next meeting.
Abby, along those lines, we may have a quorum issue next meeting.
Okay.
So we may, if Karen wants to send someone, we can all report back if we have enough people here.
Yeah, if you can let us know. Because it's just discussion, we don't necessarily need a quorum. Clearly, we'd like to have a quorum so that we know that the consent, that the consensus that's drawn from the meeting might have favorable results moving forward. I also just wouldn't wanna delay too much the electronic billboard ordinance for the applicant's sake and just because of our 60, 120-day timeline review. But I think we still could probably get it done in our February meetings. We did have to extend the 60-day review on the applicant's request. But I think that we could still get it done in February underneath that 120-day timeline, but we still wanna try to keep that moving forward. Commissioner Young, do you have a question, or you seem puzzled?
Yeah, for, for things that require an ordinance change, are we required? Are we still have to do the 60? Otherwise, we could just say no.
Yes, we could just say no. So the applicant, so we have 60. For folks that might not remember, might not be aware, all those folks listening at home. By state statute, we have to act on zoning matters within 60 days. We have the right to extend them for another 60 days to a total of 120 days. The applicant, when they made the request, the city attorney advised that the city should probably take a more proactive stance in redrafting an electronic billboard ordinance. We don't necessarily want to deny the applicant's request. That would, he is kind of following along with this process and has, as long as the new ordinance encompasses some of the things he's requesting, he, I believe he'll end up rescinding his request from the city. I know it's a little funky in there, but we're trying to make sure that we don't inadvertently approve Mr. Volcom's request, but that we consider Mr. Volcom's request as we consider how we want that ordinance to look in the future. We still have time. The extension has already been made, but we still wanna kind of keep that moving forward.
Thank you. Questions for Abby? Ken?
The only thing I wanna add is that new council member Roberts is no relation, so there's no conflict of interest. Get that right out there. I, I've never met the man, so I don't.
Long since I know his brothers, you don't look anything like them.
Yeah.
Karen?
Nothing to add.
Geneva?
I just have a question. If we've had any information on looking into getting that bench for Mike with the American Legion and the city and the fire department?
I completely forgot about that, Commissioner Kubal. We, I'll make a note, and I'll talk about that with my colleagues here.
Perfect. When Mike passed away, we kind of talked about it at a meeting that we would maybe like to have something that would honor his service, so, yeah, okay.
Justin?
No, nothing for me.
Kevin? I'm good. Susan?
Nothing.
Dan? I have nothing. So based on that, the chair's looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. It's a non-negotiable motion. All those in favor, signal by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you all for your service this evening.